Excuse me, could you say your name and address?
Chris Kranyak, 1278 Waverly Road, Eastlake, Ohio. So many of you may be here because of me. Your opinion matters, not to me. I'm here because I was compelled to speak up about what many view is an indoctrination of our children without parental consent or participation, whereas Ms. Hopkins refers to as allyship in the hidden curriculum, to which she passed out a lot of really great things to a lot of your teachers. I'm here to advocate for those who, those people in our community who are too afraid of being canceled, not being woke enough, and fearful of retribution. I think about, think about that, people afraid of their fellow man because of a difference in opinion. I teach people every day in crime prevention to not yield their power to people that don't deserve to have it. A few weeks ago, one of my 5,500 members sent me a copy of this school board's meeting. I was repulsed by what I heard. I wasn't just bothered or uncomfortable. For four, for seven minutes and 36 seconds, I listened to her reduce our community to oppressors and the oppressed, espouse that our great country is fundamentally racist insofar as they function to create, maintain social, economic, and political inequalities between whites and non-whites. I sat there listening to Ms. Hopkins as I was reminded my own college sociology classes and discussions about critical race theory, its origins in critical theory itself, and its role in Marxism and postmodernism. I listened to her key words like microaggression, whiteness, white privilege and anti-racism, equity, systemic racism. I saw her cartoon about equity, and I was stunned that the Willoughby Eastlake School Board would allow racist and defeatist rhetoric to be inculcated into our children or even the staff. I saw her session instruction where she makes clear, "In order to not be a racist, you must be anti-racist. You must be an activist. You must go to rallies and to protest against state-sponsored brutality." Is anybody gonna yield that time? May I?
Are you?
I think we said that we were not going to yield.
You're not going to yield that.
We will give.
If you prefer.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll be brief.
Go ahead.
When she makes it clear, "In order to not be racist, you must be an anti-racist. To be an activist, you must go to rallies and protest against state-sponsored police brutality," and then you want our SROs in the schools to protect your very children, let that sink in. She talks about equitable distribution of power, resources, opportunity, and that you must yield positions of power to the marginalized. Are any of you going to yield your power to the marginalized?
No.
I've seen her charts about being an activist, so I'm here tonight to be an anti-racist and an activist. I reject that if there is purposeful, organized attempt to oppress anyone who is not white, that our entire American ethos is nothing but a veiled attempt to open, to oppress and keep white people in power. I reject the systemic state-sponsored police brutality, and I reject that our children should be indoctrinated into believing that other black children are flawed and oppressed, and that white children are flawed and the oppressor. It is the very definition of racism. Ms. Hopkins sessions on CRT, which you can find, there are charts and all kinds of information, specifically talking about how you can be an ally in the hidden curriculum. I'm sorry, I reject what you say. Ms. Hopkins sessions on CRT are the antithesis of what Martin Luther King preached and ultimately died for, that his four children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. CRT will single-handedly pit student against student, child against parents, neighbor against neighbor, and create a self-fulfilling prophecy for its proponents to say, "See, our country is racist," when we all start to revolt in this revolting world that we're creating. Have we learned nothing from history? I reject it. I reject the school board's stance on it. I will do everything in my power to make sure that the three seats that will come available in November are filled with faces, new faces who aren't worried about virtue signaling or chasing the money coming down the pike from the 1619 legislation that will come down. I will reject any further levy attempts to help fund this incendiary rhetoric. And that's all, and thank you for yielding your time.
Everything that has been said already, I have nothing further, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Channell?
Cynthia Loi.
I yielded my time.
Pepanetti, Joe Pepanetti?
Name is Joe Pepanetti, 38514 Fairway Glen, Willoughby, Ohio. Bravo to you. I'm really, I'm trying to keep, I'm a very emotional person. What I, I have a lot of friends who teach in the Willoughby Eastlake Skidmore School District, and the information they send to me with the principal at South is sending out contradicts everything what you just said, everything.
Yep.
So you know what? When she puts a little picture of the box of three kids standing there, and we gotta take from one to help the other, instead of teaching the other to build a bigger box to look over the wall, shame on all of you.
That's right.
That's not, that's not what is.
That's exactly what happened. I'm speaking.
That's what the picture is.
I'm speaking, please. I didn't interrupt you.
You're right.
Don't interrupt me.
That's fair.
I got respect for all of you. Show it to us.
Fair.
You were hired on. We voted you in. Your job is to educate our kids in math, English, science, not diversity. I don't care who moves into this neighborhood, they need to be part of our tribe, not us changing someone else's thought of what theirs is. Just teach them to learn to read, science, the basic stuff. Let us as parents dictate what we want to do, not you. You were voted in, you could be voted out. Period. And all across this country, people have had enough with school boards who feel that they are no better than we do. I served my country. My father did, so I don't want to hear it. You raise our boys to go to work, no excuses. You want to have a car, you're gonna go to work and pay for it. No free handouts. That's the first thing you need to teach people. Go to work. Own your life, and don't look at yourself and say, "Because I can't do something because of the way I look." Teach them a different value, that they can. In this country, you can. Everybody wants to come here. Nobody's going anywhere else. The world wants to come here for a reason. Don't screw it up now. Too many great men died to give you guys where you're at. Don't start changing it, screwing it up. Once it's gone, it's gone, fellas. All right? Please, common sense. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Laura Wolf, 37752 Lakeshore. I'm gonna skip because you guys covered some of the stuff. I'm here because of the equity conversation that Ms. Hopkins presented at the last board meeting. Since expressing my concern for this presentation on social media, I've had numerous parents reach out to me sharing some of the same concerns. I've had teachers within the district also reach out to me. They're afraid of retribution. They're afraid to speak up and how, and express how they feel about this. On 9/1, Ms. Hopkins had a staff meeting. She advised the staff that there'd be training and awareness on a monthly basis around racial and social inequities. Since that time, she's held monthly sessions where the staff's been required to sit in their discomfort, watch Black Lives Matter videos, watch videos on white supremacy, take a race quiz where, where they have to answer questions like, "Do you feel you need to prove that you're not a racist?" And if you answer yes to any of these questions, it shows the racial stress that triggers a range of defensive moves by white people. She's distributed material stating how you unknowingly benefit from racism, presentations that ask you to yield your position of power to those otherwise marginalized. I've yet to see any of the content or discussion around the social inequities or how COVID has impacted the Willoughby Eastlake School District. The sole focus here has been on race, and race only, from what I've seen, what teachers have sent me, and what the public has said. Here are my questions for the board. Have you all received or reviewed and approved the content that she's putting out to 1,200 students at Willoughby South or to the staff? Have any of you attended these sessions where she's spewing this hateful rhetoric racism? Any of you, besides Chuck Murphy? I understand he's attended one. Have you all taken the race quiz to rate your white fragility? Phase two outlined an audit of the classroom and school practices. What exactly does that entail? Did I already hit two minutes? Jeez, okay. What does that entail? You say it's not about curriculum, we're not teaching them, but they're gonna go in and observe the classrooms? What's, what does that mean? And what kind of stress does that put on your teachers? I, I'm almost done. Courageous conversations with students. If it's anything like the conversation she's having with the adults in the room, that's really, really concerning. Just two short years ago, this district couldn't afford for our children to play sports. We couldn't do extracurricular activities. We fired or had to let go of teachers and counselors. We almost didn't have busing. We rallied, this community rallied for our children, and this is what we're faced with two years down the road? This is outrageous. This is not what's plaguing our community and our district. How about bullying? How about any of the things? How about talk to these people that have their kids, suicide? Talk to these parents that have their kids virtual learning and see what they're going through, and see what the teachers are seeing. I have one that's brick and mortar, and I have one that's at home. And the things I see on these Zoom calls, and it's not the teachers, God bless the teachers, they're doing the best that they can in this crazy environment, but what I see happening to, with the other students in the background and living, and what they're going through, that's where we need to focus. Not teaching how white, how we're white supremists or, or any of this nonsense. I, I just have to check one more thing before I'm done here. We elected this board to represent our children, parents, and residents alike. Don't be afraid to speak up against this stuff. Please, don't be afraid to speak up against this. You can accomplish diversity and inclusion training without marginalizing an entire race. My company, I've went through it for 20 years. I've never felt less than, as a human being, for being white. I've had to teach it. I've been in charge of hiring and firing people at my job. Of course, I've had to go through this kind of training. I've never once felt marginalized by this training. It can be accomplished. Now more than ever, we need policies that bring us together, not rip us apart. I reject this content. There's many other parents that reject this content. It's, if it's not immediately seized, removed, you cannot possibly expect this community to support the next two Lovleys on the ballot. We, you will hear us loud and clear.
My name is Irene Rosenberg, and my address is 5778 Royal Drive in Willoughby. And I hate to change the topic, but I'm gonna start talking about AP Spanish at Willoughby South High School. AP, AP Spanish is an extremely valuable course for those who wish to continue with language in higher education. The credits that can be earned are immensely helpful in completing college requirements and give students the opportunity to save money and time with help from their high school. AP Spanish is considered one of the most valuable AP courses because it involves such a wide range of skills and subjects such as culture, pronunciation, communication, and writing. Removing AP Spanish from the curriculum, or from the program next year, would dismantle the Spanish department in a way that is permanent. Future Spanish students would not be encouraged to further their education in the subject, and it would be practically impossible to revive the program once destroyed. The removal of this course is especially upsetting considering the low enrollment in many other AP classes, such as AP Literature with only six students, and AP Psychology with eight this year, the same number of students that are currently signed up to take AP Spanish next year. The enrollment number fluctuates over the years. COVID forced many students to go online, and such students are hesitant to take more challenging classes. As COVID clears up, the numbers will eventually go up. For instance, there are currently about 30 students signed up for Honor Spanish IV next year. So the year directly after AP Spanish is cut would have a much higher number than, of students enrolled than this abnormal amount of eight. The class of 2022 has suffered greatly from the losses due to COVID and budget cuts. We deserve the decency to be offered a class that has run for many years without interruption. One year, there were only five people in one of the Spanish classes, but the course was not cut. As a student in AP Literature this year, I am extremely grateful to have been offered the opportunity to take this class. In fact, I really enjoyed the small class size. There are many other examples of AP courses running with low enrollment numbers, which were deemed essential to education. Eight dedicated students should be enough to salvage a class as crucial to academic achievement as any other. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jonathan Broadbent. Appreciate the opportunity to come up and speak. I represent Protect Ohio Children. I'm here from Beechwood, Ohio. I represent. May I remove the mask while I speak at the podium? Great, thank you. I'll be able to speak more clearly. I have been contacted by employees of your school district and asked to come up and represent their interests. You have employees working for you who are uncomfortable coming to their principal and to you as a board to speak their minds and express their fears and concerns. Many parents, obviously, but including teachers and staff, feel that the curriculum and school district is, is being manipulated in uncomfortable and awkward ways, that the school is pushing what is sometimes referred to as critical race theory. I understand your comments earlier. I've heard those ad nauseam from 30 or more school districts. I represent 204 school districts in Ohio. I'm tied in with the current court case against the Board of Education at the Ohio level, and we hear it often, that critical race theory is not a part of the curriculum. However, when we look into the details and pull back the curtain and look at what's actually being taught, we do find significant evidence of inclusion of 1619 Project, which has been summarily dismissed as, as misguided, devoid of any historical fact. Even the woman who is one of the key writers of that, under testimony, provided testimony that it was not meant to be history, that it is indeed speculation, that it is creative context to try and change the narrative, quote unquote. I want to draw your attention to a resource that is drastically underutilized in Cleveland, Ohio, and that is Peter Kurzenow. The longest-standing member of the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights is right here in Cleveland, Ohio, and he is dead set against any inclusion of 1619 Project, critical race theory, or anything of that ilk. I want to add to that Dr. Carol Swain, Bob Woodson, Chloe Valdery, other great intellectuals who are seeking to address the concerns that you stay, say that you have in this district in a much more productive way than what I'm hearing from your staff. Thank you very much.
My name is Molly McLaughlin. I live at 4462 Center Street in Willoughby, and I would like to also talk about AP Spanish. There are so many opportunities for students who are struggling in academics, and not nearly enough for high-achieving students who wish to maximize their high school education. Taking away the courses that help these students advance also diminishes the credibility of Willoughby South High School as an academic institution. Most colleges require language credits, so taking away an advanced course that develops the skills for college strips opportunities to be prepared for success. Forcing students to use CCP over AP actually pushes them out of the district, and the credits are not insured. They may not transfer to every college. AP classes are statistically more attractive to elite universities than CCP. Although CCP is an option for us, those interested in AP Spanish would likely have to start over to an elementary level of Spanish, when we have advanced to an intermediate level already. The students who wish to currently take the course have been planning on enrollment since they started their path taking Spanish I back in middle school. As a junior, it's upsetting to have my dreams taken away like that. Suddenly cutting a course with so many benefits and so much enrichment obliterates the progress that we have, that we have dedicated so much time in our academic career to. We as students would not disappoint the district with the scores at the end of the year. AP Spanish has had historically high passing rates and has a dedicated teaching staff, which would benefit the district and students equally.
My name is Madeline Whitaker. I live at 2898 Lamp Light Lane, Willoughby Hills, Ohio. I'm also here to talk about AP Spanish. We would like to share the opinions of past AP Spanish students who cannot be here today but would still like to advocate for this cause. Former student Adriana Zavro, as a recent graduate from South High School, I can attest to the benefits of the AP Spanish program and what skills it provides to the students. Not only did this class readily prefer me to excel in my higher-level college Spanish course, it taught me many academic skills and strategies that have assisted me across all subjects of my coursework. This AP course encourages students to utilize new ways of thinking, help them to gain confidence in their knowledge, and learn how to effectively convey their opinions on a variety of current global topics. AP Spanish is not just another course to take for some credit. It produces well-rounded, culturally-aware students who are generally prepared to take on life after high school with greater academic knowledge and confidence in themselves. Furthermore, concerning the petition, although many people who signed it are not actively enrolling in the class itself, they do pay taxes and would not want the school district to abandon the priorities that truly matter. Especially considering the passage of the levy and the financial aid from the state, the fiscal aspect of argument should not hinder the running of one AP course. Each person who signs, who signed recognized the importance of foreign language education, especially at higher levels. It should be encouraged, not taken away. Clearly, it is concerning how students like us have to fight about a class that should be important to the district as it is for us. Due to the sheer importance of this course, the previous enrollment numbers, and the overall success of the class in the past, we believe it would be an unwise decision to cut such a valuable AP course. All we would like is an equal opportunity to strive and make our high school proud, and keeping AP Spanish will help us to keep on our path to achievement and educational enrichment. We want to look back upon our high school experience with fondest and appreciation for all we were able to accomplish. We hope that you can act in the best interest of the students, and we thank you for this opportunity to listen to our concerns. We sincerely hope our statements bear enough weight to compel a change of heart. Thank you.
Would it be okay if I moved the microphone forward a little bit? It's hard to hear upstairs. I'm not, thank you. I don't know. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Betsy Salzberg. I'm a child and parent advocate, representative, proxy, if you will, and I'm here at the behest of many of the parents in your own school district, as well as other districts. I'm also a child and adolescent psychologist. A couple of notations. I, I made so many notes as you all were talking, it's hard to know which agenda to follow here, but I wanted to say something with respect to you, Superintendent. As you talked about the last three years, the changes that were make, being made to accommodate the changing population you have, I was thinking back of my own parents, and their parents for that matter, who came here from Poland and Russia. They had no English at all. We heard no English in the household. We heard a language called Yiddish. There was no English, and there were no accommodations in the schools. There was no welfare. There was no help for us who didn't have enough money, enough clothing, enough anything. I don't understand why all of these changes have to be made to accommodate whatever you're describing as an incoming population that is different from what you already have. So that's one thought I, I wanted to share with you. I want to thank Irene Rosenberg and the other two young ladies, and I can answer your question. I know why AP classes are being threatened everywhere. Gifted education, it accounts for 1% of the fiscal monies that flow down from federal to state governments. 99% is going to special education girls. You ought to look into that. Only 1% to gifted and advanced placement. So that's the answer to your question. I already said I'm here at the behest of parents. They're very, very uncomfortable with what they saw in a video that I couldn't take a look at. It's not up. The video of the last board meeting is not up. I called and talked to a nice lady named Pam, I think she's your assistant. She called me back yesterday, or perhaps last Friday, and she said, "No, the, the board agrees to put up the video and post the minutes at the May 10th meeting." So I couldn't even watch the video of what these parents are talking about. Perhaps they got the video some other way, and I'm gonna ask you to allow me. Will anyone else be willing to, to give me one minute of their time? One minute?
One minute.
Okay. I'll talk really, really fast. The parents are very uncomfortable with the board moving away from a curriculum that should really be what we knew as the three Rs, and I'm gonna include with that American history and civics, both which are creeping, creeping, creeping away. We can't let that happen. We don't, they don't want critical race theory. They don't want sex edu, comprehensive sex education. They don't want social, emotional learning. These things are in the hands of these people, the parents of the children. These aren't your children. These aren't the teachers' children. These aren't the, the principal's children, I believe her name is Ms. Hayes that you spoke of. Hopkins, excuse me. I don't know, you, you seem like very nice people, and perhaps, I'm quite sure you're getting an agenda from above yourself. I don't know where it's coming from. I don't have kids in this district. I don't have skin in the game here, but I really care. I see what's happening to kids. I see kids having meltdowns in my therapy room because of what's been going on with COVID. Panic attacks, meltdowns, suicide ideation. These are the kinds of things that we all should be talking about, not what you're talking about here. And whether you call it critical race theory or anything you like, it all comes down to the same thing. Yep. I have so much more, and you know, I'm just, at this point, I'm gonna say this. I do want, I want everyone here to know that any parent that brings their child to me for the la, for the last many years, I recommend get them out of public school as quickly as you can. Today, there are homeschool hubs that are popping up all over the place, and you guys better know that, because you're gonna lose students. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public comment portion of the, of the board meeting.
I, I do want to make very clear, the, the, we are adopting no curriculum, no curriculum at all. What we're talking about, and I think there, and I understand the confusion. I understand what, I understand what you saw in a presentation. Okay? I understand that, that this was a, sir. I totally understand what you're saying.
The staff do, I mean, it goes beyond just what you said in the video. Absolutely. For the last two years at South High School, it's caused problems between officers, staff, fighting that you've had, and how the public understands how that fight developed and what happened from it. These are issues that have been going on for two years at South High School, and now she's being moved to another position and in charge of a virtual school. And, and this hidden curriculum that she spoke about is a real thing. And when you look at these words that she is using, they are CRT 2AT. She knows what she's saying, she knows what she's teaching, and it will be encouraged for the teachers to teach our children in the classroom. You know it. On this slide, she said, "We all have a playing role in systemic racism." And I have a question for Ms. Hopkins. What is her role in systemic racism?
And if she's gonna be in charge of virtual learning, I can tell you as a virtual parent right now, she's gonna get away with a lot. She's gonna get away with a lot. And what she said about, about what we see going on in other homes from these other kids, it's absolutely horrible. It is absolutely horrible.
And we, and you are, you are right. We face a. And we, and you are, you are right, we, we face a plethora of challenges.
We haven't addressed bullying. Nothing has been done. My, my, this was bullied two years ago, and I was told until the same exact incident happens five or more times from the same people, it's not bullying. So I was informed then that there's a definition of bullying, and what, what was happening to my son was not that. And nothing has been done about any of that. And every day since COVID, we're seeing more and more kids commit suicide. At the ages where suicide should not even be.
Thought. And we put it, we put a lot of, you are, there's nothing you said that's not correct. But we, for example, we, we talked about, you spoke about gifted education. You may not know that we have the School of Innovation, which is a significant investment in our gifted students. It's one of the top rated schools in the entire country, much less the state of Ohio. We, 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 but, but we are, what I'm saying to you is, we have a lot of challenges, as all public schools have a lot of challenges. I can assure you that we are doing the very best we can to help all of our students, okay? That, that's the bottom line, we're not trying to not worry about your child, we know there is, we know that there are, especially with COVID, we have a lot of kids who need help. We have crossroads in, we spent a lot of our resources across the board trying to help ourselves. Now, I can tell you that when we build our curriculum, or not our curriculum, but our professional development, moving forward next year, we're going to bring in a consultant to help us develop that, so that we don't end up in a meeting like this again.
Who is that consultant?
We haven't, I don't have one yet.
Because this is what your principal sent out to our kids, here's the pictures of the BLM activists she sent out. So either you don't know about it, or you do, and you're not being, just to be honest. How many of you know she sent this out to children? Do you know? Do you know? If you don't know, shame on you, and if you do know and you're not saying nothing?
Well, let him answer.
I will absolutely answer, I will absolutely answer that question. I saw it for the first time about five hours ago.
After. That was in February, she said in February.
I understand that, but it was sent, it was sent out, it was sent out in a forum in which, I'm not on Instagram.
It was in Schoolology, she said it was in Schoolology.
I understand that.
And no one's saying anything, all the rest of the mics are saying nothing, and in the meeting, you guys were all applauding for it. So you were all applauding, then you agreed with it.
Is there a, is there a code, is there a code that teachers must adhere to, a school policy, that if they violate it, they're reprimanded, and any more violations could result in termination?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you mean.
Okay, where I work, we had definite rules and procedures. If I violate those, I am written up the first time, second time, I'm fired. Do you have anything comparable to that?
We also have, we, we work in a union environment, and we don't have, it's more technical than...
You can fire and then go to a union meeting.
What's that?
You can fire and then go to the union meetings over mediation.
I, I would challenge you on as far as that goes, to look up a term called tenure. Look it up and read what tenure says.
I know what tenure is.
Administrators don't have tenure, administrators have contracts. I would have to look.
What saddens me about all of this tonight is that I saw all of these brave, wonderful young students who came up here and spoke because they are very concerned that their AP Spanish class is being cut. How much money is Ms. Hopkins being paid to do this? $120,000 a year as a virtual principal, diversity director? The money that should be, that should be going to those AP classes and to those kids and recovering from this entire COVID fiasco and pandemic, and people losing their lives? We need to get those kids back on track, get this straightened out, and stop talking about the CRT clickbait and all the words. That money needs to be going.
Thank you.
Well said.
Again, that, that now will conclude the public comment portion of the meeting, and the next, the next part of the agenda is the approval of minutes.